Is there a reason, nobody wants to sit on this side?
I know, right? It was warmer over here.
Why?
Because there's more people, buddy, right?
I've never heard it that way, but okay.
Is there a reason, nobody wants to sit on this side?
I know, right? It was warmer over here.
Why?
Because there's more people, buddy, right?
I've never heard it that way, but okay.
Welcome, everybody, to our council meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Today's number fifteen. Can we get, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everybody, to our council meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Today's number fifteen. Can we get, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is for the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for first responders and military members. Thank you.
Marica, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Soto. Present. Council member Moran.
Present.
Council member King.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, council and the mayor are in attendance.
Council, any changes to the agenda? Okay, so we're gonna move on to citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows the members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public who are unrecognized by myself should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the council this evening for items which are on the agenda this evening. Members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any citizen comments in person?
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Jipjeet Singh Gopal. I wanted to talk about some things that are kind of beyond the scope of just Livingston, but they impact all of us more than any city-specific issue. And so I wanted to ask real quick, has anybody on the council kept up with the declining levels of water in the Colorado River? Yes? Shitong? Anybody else? Has anybody been reading up on that? So, the levels of the Colorado River are getting to historic lows. And California, along with some of the other states that we border with, like Colorado and New Mexico, right? We all share water from that river. Its biggest reservoir, Lake Mead, it's at an all-time low. And the federal government, in the summer, announced its first-ever Level 2A shortage condition on it. Lake Powell, which is also another one of the river's reservoirs, is also at an all-time low. So in June, the federal government gave the states that share water from the Colorado River sixty days to reach an agreement on how they were gonna ration their water, with the states having to potentially cut their water usage by forty percent. The states never reached an agreement, and the federal government never followed up either, which in my opinion is kind of just incompetent on both of their parts. But based on pre-existing deals and policy, California's gonna have to cut its water usage by the time Lake Mead's water levels drop to about 1,040 feet. And at the rate we're at right now, that's projected to happen by the end of this year. The important point that I want to make, though, that this isn't really a matter of if, it's a matter of when. The level of water in this river has been dropping for well over twenty years, as temperatures have been increasing. Even when there's normal amounts of rain, there's not enough runoff that gets there. And as temperatures go up and the soil is dry more and more, the levels keep going down and down. Climate scientists have been screaming about this for over twenty years, saying, hey, we're gonna get to a day where we're gonna run out of water. But obviously, we have corrupt incompetent people in all levels of government, especially state and federal, who chose not to do anything about it. It was ninety degrees in mid-October here. That's never happened before in my lifetime. I don't know if that's ever happened before in your lifetime, but again, at the rate we're at, it's not getting any better. It's only getting worse and exponentially. We've moved to be using more and more coal, when we should be going to more nuclear renewable energy. And that's gonna result in us running out of water. And a lot of infrastructure's gonna collapse as a result of that. There's gonna be a day where either the state or the federal government, they're gonna announce that you can't water your lawn, or your plants, or maybe we won't be able to water plants around the city, on the highway, et cetera. Crop levels are gonna decrease, food prices are gonna go up, energy prices are gonna go up, infrastructure's gonna collapse, right? A lot is dependent on water, how much industry uses water. And I think that because nobody's doing anything, someone has to. Why not us, right? We, as a city, can lead a push for this. Somebody's gotta do it, because a day's gonna come where we're running out of water, and nobody wants to be there. I know I'm out, but I just highly want to encourage the council to read up on that. I didn't get a chance to print anything out for you guys. I got late coming out of class. But I'm sure I can find all your emails online. I'll send you the stuff that I'm looking into. You can see the sources for yourself. But this is drastic, like, really, really drastic. And I want to see us address this.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments at this time? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our awards, presentations, and proclamation section. We have a very special recognition tonight, which is Years of Service recognition for our former police chief, Chris Soria. So I'm gonna have him come forward, introduce himself, and any guests that he brought on, and we'll have an opportunity to talk. Go ahead in the microphone.
Everything's changed. I got confused.
Thank you, Chris, for being here tonight. So I know, after some time, we wanted to recognize you, because we've never had the opportunity to formally recognize your Years of Service here in our city. You spent, you know, all your life here at the service of our community, in the city of Livingston. So it was very important that we recognize that here at this formal setting. So we have a plaque for you, that we made for you, on behalf of the city and the city council. It's just saying, "In appreciation for your thirty-two years of dedicated service and commitment to the community of Livingston." So congratulations. I hope you're enjoying retirement, but we do miss you, and we appreciate all your Years of Service. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you. Actually, I just want to say something really quick, because I know you probably, you guys, are busy. But I want to thank each and every one of you, obviously, you know, for this, because, you know, I was here thirty-plus years, and it wasn't all me. It was a lot of people that helped me at the things that I did, and the positions that I held within the years that I was working at the Livingston Police Department. So I thank each and every one of you, council members, mayor, mayor Protem, for supporting me through those years. Also, the past council members. I think I just saw one here. You know, Gurpal, who I worked with many years. You know, I also want to thank, you know, obviously, my wife, Deanna, who still works at the police department, who supported me over the years. My family, also the workers here, at the police department, City Hall, and Public Works. I couldn't have did it without them. I mean, I always worked every day with them in one shape or form. But one last thing, I don't think I really could have did it without the support of the citizens of this community. They were probably the backbone that actually helped me throughout the years that I worked here at the police department and worked my way up. I've come to know a lot of people, made a lot of friends, one of which, who lives here in this city, who's one of my best friends, who I met here while I was working, and working my way up. So, other than that, I want to thank you all for this very nice award. I do appreciate it, very much so. So thank you very much.
I can now be mean to you. You can't arrest me anymore, so. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for years and years of service. You and I kind of started working together way before I got elected, when I was volunteering with the police department back in ninety-seven, ninety-six, around there. And through that years, always, you always given your hundred percent-plus to the city, and we've always had a great working relationship. And we do have an achievement, but, you know, we still have your connections, and you are sorely missed, not only by me, but the community as a whole. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Council will be taking a break.
All right, let's go. We're coming back for our meeting. Announcement and reports. City staff announcement and reports. Vanessa, do we have anybody tonight?
Good evening, mayor. Council members, yes, we do have a report from our finance department, Public Works, Recreation, and Police.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Our first order of business, I would like to introduce our new HR coordinator, RC Cruz. Good evening. So RC comes to us with twenty-plus years of experience as an HR coordinator or HR professional. And we're very pleased to have her join our team with all of her expertise, coming in, assisting us with all of the new recruitments and future HR matters. RC has already been embedded into our existing recruitments, and we have quite a few that we hope to close soon and bring on additional staff to help support the city and its citizens in the activities we provide. So RC, welcome, and this is the council that you'll be serving, along with the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to being part of the city of Livingston.
Awesome. Welcome to the city of Livingston.
At the last council meeting, there was a request to provide information on our costs for Alhambra. And so I put together just a simple slide to show the year-over-year costs by department. And you can see, for each of the fiscal years, fiscal year nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, City Hall costs have stayed relatively the same. We do wanted to, or I'm sorry, I wanted to demonstrate the prior year to COVID, just to demonstrate our normal operating costs. As we know, costs have risen over time. And so therefore, we do see that in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, that the costs for each department, save for fire, were pretty, pretty flat in those early years, and then did have an increase in that most recent year. And then what is not demonstrated here is actually police. Police uses another provider, but what was asked was the Alhambra costs. And so that's what I've provided. Are there any follow-on questions? Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, in regards to, we forgot to report regarding closed session. We'll be going back into our closed session after a regular meeting. Sorry, Vanessa.
That's okay. Our Public Works Department, I believe, they have another presentation, so.
Good evening, mayor, council. Before I get started on my presentation, I'd like to introduce our new employee, Francisco Trahilio. He is our new maintenance mechanic. So come on up, Francisco. Francisco, he's in his second week. He comes from a long line of being mechanics. He, Phoenix, Arizona, is where you did your...
I went to Fremont.
Fremont Institute of Technology, where he did his automotive schooling, and then he did warehousing for management for about fifteen, twenty years. So he comes to us with a lot of experience. We expect a lot from him. And a little bit about Francisco, he's been married for about eighteen years. He has two kids, fifteen-year-old boy named Xavier, and a fourteen-year-old girl named Delia. Also has a dog, two cats, and a hamster. He enjoys working on cars, having a drink or two in his spare time. So he's already a mechanic at home, and now he's working for us, and we're looking for good things from him. And not just mechanical, but he does a lot of bodywork. And he's very, very knowledgeable in construction, electrical, and all those things, so I'm glad he's here.
Welcome to the city of Livingston.
And then I'll go ahead and start my report for this November fifteenth. This is one of our Measure V replacement sidewalks. We're still working on a lot of uneven sidewalks, broken, and, you know, areas that are needed for repair. So this is one of the projects. There's actually two sections on Fifth Street that we're working on. We recently did a little area on, by the railroad tracks, and we'll keep working on that area as well. We also been brightening up a lot of our red curb. This area is over at the Yamato Colony. We're having a lot of issues with a lot of the parents parking in front of the school, in front of the well, and anywhere they could. Ever since this got painted, that has stopped. Measure V, corner of Hammett, Walnut, Kerbin Gutter, and ADA ramp repair. This corner is right there by the Hammett and Walnut area, right in front of the new Chevron. Well, not new, but you know, it's a Chevron gas station now. And that shows some of the work after the cement was poured. And then the Rolf Construction was awarded the project to work on that. And that was a, it was not just a sidewalk. It was the sidewalk, Kerbin Gutter. There's an ADA ramp on that corner that had been flooded there for a while. So it's back in good operation there in that corner. LMD maintenance cleanup, tree trimming. We've been hitting it hard right before the winter starts. There's a lot of areas that we've been hitting in this area. It's Witten Parkway, Went Parkway, Robin Avenue. And we're not just doing the cleanup, we're actually trimming all the trees, so, you know, they're not, all the low-hanging branches have been pruned, and we're trying to keep up and get ready before the winter. Here's another area. This is Robin. We've hit Olive Avenue is the middle one. The one all the way to the right is right on our Walnut, just down the street from the Chevron. Went Parkway, and the Hammett, heading towards Olive. These are all areas where not just the LMDs are getting cleaned up, but you can see the trees have been pruned up so cars could drive underneath and not have any issues, and it makes it look a lot cleaner. The same thing here at our new, our Don Meyer Park. The future light that is gonna be installed in the back is all the way to the right, but we have been pruning trees, shrubs there. And the back of that light, the back of that park is gonna have an installation of a new light pointing towards the back of the park, in the middle of the park. And that park already has a light towards the front and the street, but because of all the activity that we've been having on this, that side of town, this light is gonna help that area that has just, all the homes are just finished getting built out, and this park will be illuminated. LaSerrill Park, I know it took a while, but it got done. You know, between all the issues we had with, you know, all the boat problems and parts problems, here's, in between, the guys, the company that played again, put some time in. They got close to the end of it, and there was a few parts that were very critical. There were handrails for kids, so we were having to wait a little bit longer. The rededication was just this past weekend. Here you see Mayor and Tony LaSerrill. That is the son of the, his dad was, that park was named after his dad. He was able to attend the rededication of the park structure, so that was nice. We did get some kids, of course, to come out and play, parents. We had drinks, cookies, donuts for everyone, coffee. And then, last but not least, this weekend also, the green waste event at the wastewater treatment plant. Every year, we do two Saturdays, back-to-back, and they're always good for the community to clean up their green waste, so they're not end up on the outskirts of town or anywhere else. But it was, visited a lot from seven to four, and this coming Saturday will have the same, seven to four, and it does help the community. Like I say, I drive around town, and you could see trucks already loaded for this weekend, so it's a good thing that we do for the community, and it gets used heavily. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Tony.
Welcome. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, I think I asked this question before, but maybe we need a refresher in regards to mattresses and tires disposal. I know that...
I know we just scheduled it. I can't give you the date, but we have just scheduled it. We'll be doing the same thing as we do for the green waste. Before it happens, we will send it out with a billing, and it will be the same thing. It'll be the mattresses, the tires, and...
Electronics?
Electronics, usually together. And we always have a good turnout for that as well.
Can you make sure that you send that out to the council, like, the flyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for the work on that playground. I know there's been concerns regarding R. Kelly and Park. I know we had a conversation, and I guess are looking for, or getting quotes in regards to replacing that facility, or that structure, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you for looking into that. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Vanessa?
We have a report from our police department, mayor.
Evening, mayor, council. Just a couple of things. The seventy thousand dollars in mobile technology that we were awarded last year from the county Rand Board is now here. This last Friday, on Veterans Day of all days, we were able to get four of those computers installed in the car. That technology is up and running, and already providing very fruitful results to us with our communication between the patrol cars and dispatch. When I talk about communication, about the GPS, the mapping, and just a better service that our guys are able to do in the field. Cops for Kids is well underway. We started receiving applications already. We already have in excess of seventy applications for seventy different families, and that'll be servicing over a hundred and fifty kids during the Christmas holiday. Our plan is to do the drive-through gift exchange again. If anyone wants to volunteer to dress up like Santa Claus, we can take applications for that as well. So, another cool thing with Cops for Kids, on Sunday, December eleventh, the Envious Car Club took it upon themselves, they're holding a car show in the fourteen-hundred block of Front Street to help build our arsenal of Christmas gifts to get out to families. They've kind of taken it upon themselves to build the theme to be fill a cop car, so we're gonna get a cop car out there and see if we can't fill it up with Christmas presents. So that'll be happening from nine to two on the eleventh. We also have a parade that St. Jude's is conducting at the Catholic Church that same day, so we'll be busy. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
For Santa Claus?
Congratulations, Gurpal. You'll be the Santa Claus. Thank you.
I did it last year. I can do it again.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you, chief.
And our last reports from our Recreation Department.
Good evening, everyone. I have made a little slideshow with lots of decorations for your viewing pleasure. So, centennial holiday season is coming up. Oh, wait, I'm supposed to do this right. I just pushed this button. So our youth basketball season is underway. We've had three hundred and fifty kids registered. And of course, they start practice the first week of December and roll through the first week of March. Next, we have our Court of Trees, the Lighted Christmas Tree Forest. Our goal is a hundred trees for our hundred years. This year, trees are forty-five dollars a tree, and people can order them at City Hall. We set it up, and they get to decorate it. Our grand lighting will take place on December second. I apologize, I didn't put the date on there, but it is Friday, December second. And the LMS band will be playing. We'll have hot cocoa and treats that will be sold by LHS, H-Y-L-C. So the forest will be open every night through Christmas. Our Lighted Christmas Parade and the Gift Fair is returning December ninth. It starts at six thirty PM. Our theme is Christmas of Years Gone By. We have a hundred entries for the hundred years. We're looking for a hundred entries for the one hundred years. So we're going to go partially through the community, starting over at Hilltop and F. And we will, when we hit Peach, we'll come straight down Main Street. And then the people will get to enjoy the gift fair. Please help us get a hundred entries for the one hundred years. And you can see there's some familiar faces down there on the pictures. Next will be something just for the centennial. We're having a concert Tuesday, December sixth, at seven PM at LHS. The Livingston High School Marching Band, Jazz Band and Color Guard, along with the Livingston Middle School Marching Band and Color Guard, and the Livingston High School alumni will be performing. That's really going to be neat. Mr. Winton will actually be one of the stars of the show. He will be reciting "Twas the Night Before Christmas." Next in the news is Merced County Indian Chamber of Commerce is going to join us this year for our Splash of Color Run. And they will be bringing in an activity at Arkalian Park, celebrating the holy event. So April first is the date of the event, so mark your calendar. Also, this last week, we had a meeting with Dolan, our grant manager, as we have been every week, about the Recplex. But we've completed our list of programming for the building, and Dolan did a site visit. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll have a layout of the building, how the rooms are, all of our programming will fit into rooms. And then it is going to go to an architect for design. We are running on schedule. I am happy to announce that this summer, we'll be bringing the Junior Giants Program to our Recreation Department. And what that means is that we will be able to offer a youth baseball program free to the kids of our community. And also, Winton, you know, our outline communities. So kids that maybe have wanted to play, but they couldn't afford our fee, now they'll be able to offer, we'll be able to offer it to them free of charge. It's pretty exciting. They get a mitt and pants and shirt. They have a special program for training coaches. It's really a neat... I'm hoping that we'll learn a lot from this program. And they're going to send us an intern to help run the program so the impact on our department will be minimal. And then lastly, because I'm not sure that I'll be at the next meeting, I just want to thank Gogandee, Raoul, and Juan for all their support and encouragement over the years, and we just wish you the best.
Thank you so sweet. Any questions, Counsel? Thank you, Jackie.
No items to report, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmembers? Councilmember King? Councilmember Jose Moran?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Maria Soto?
Nothing to report.
Mayor Protam Garcia?
There's nothing to report tonight.
Myself have nothing to report tonight. We do have one last meeting, I believe, to certify the election, and then I'll have something to say during that night. I'm going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or city manager request specific items be removed. Counsel, what are your wishes in regards to the consent calendar?
I move to approve.
A motion by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second? Second by...
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember King?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, Counsel. I know there was an item regarding the refurbishment of the fire station under consent calendar, so that's a welcome addition or resources to improve our current fire station. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearings. Item number ten, Community Facilities District Number twenty seventeen dash one, Public Services, Annexation Number Two, which is a public hearing. Once again, resolution annexing the territory to a Community Facilities District authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of a tax to qualified electors. City of Livingston Communities Facilities District twenty seventeen dash one, Annexation Number Two, and resolution declaring the results of a special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien City of Livingston Communities Facilities District twenty dash one, Annexation Number Two.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Susanna Hernandez. I am a senior project manager at Willdan Financial Services, and I have joined the meeting to assist staff in presenting the annexation of the properties into the Community Facilities District. A little background on the CFD. In twenty eighteen, by Resolution Number twenty eighteen dash twenty, the city council did form the Community Facilities District Number twenty seventeen dash one, Public Services. And it was the intention that future developments within the city would annex into the CFD. The purpose of the CFD is to mitigate impact of new development on city services such as police and fire services, park maintenance, street maintenance, drainage maintenance, and landscaping and lighting maintenance. On September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted a resolution of intention to annex new developments into the CFD and called for a public hearing to be held, which is today. The property owners of new developments consented to join the CFD and submitted petitions and ballots to the city of Livingston. The new developments will consist of seven separate commercial and residential projects. And the expected annual special tax revenue from these new developments is approximately eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two after all the developments have been issued building permits. Within the current CFD, there are three developments. As you can see on the map, the big one consists of a medical facility. The one on left of Winton Parkway, I believe, it's the Panda Express. It's a relatively new development. And then the one on, I believe, B Street, north of B Street, that's the Pizza Hut with the office facility. So all those developments are relatively new. But those are currently in the CFD boundaries. The new developments that are being annexed into the CFD consist of seven new developments. The first one, it's an eighty apartment unit, divided into five buildings. The rate per unit is six hundred and forty-six dollars, and the total annual revenue for that would be fifty-one thousand, six ninety-three. There's a development with a gas station combined with a store, car wash, and a restaurant. The commercial developments are levied fifteen cents per lot square footage. The multifamily residential developments are levied six hundred and forty-six dollars per unit. And the detached residential units are levied eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents per unit. The developments are dispersed throughout the city of Livingston, south and north of the freeway. Most of them are west of Hammett Avenue. So the next steps today is to hold a public hearing to allow any interested persons to be heard on matters related to the CFD annexation. And then after the public is heard, a city council shall then close a public hearing and adopt the resolution annexing property into the CFD and calling for a special election. After that, the results of the ballot shall be announced, and the city council shall adopt the resolution declaring the election results. And if it passes, directing the recording of the amended notice of special tax lien. So I'll go back to the public hearing step.
Does that conclude the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So any questions by Counsel at this moment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open for any comments, protests, and questions from interested persons concerning the annexation of development, of the developments into Community Facilities District Number twenty seventeen dash one, Public Services. Have any brand protests been received by the property owners of the property to be annexed into the CFD?
Written protests were not submitted by the property owners of the annexation property.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public or anybody on the phone? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel? Comments, questions, motions? Yes. Is it after we approve the, right? After we approve the...
Before.
Is it before? Okay. All right, the city council of the city of Livingston adopted the resolution annexing territory into the CFD Number twenty seventeen dash one and calling a special election and submitting to the qualified elector of the CFD a ballot measure regarding the annual levy of special taxes within the CFD. The results of the election authorizing the levy of special taxes within the CFD for annexation, territory shall now be declared.
I will go ahead and open the ballots that we've seen before. I receive a ballot from Nicole... Nicole Basti. I'm sorry. And that is for one vote.
Was that a yes or a no?
It was a yes. Next vote is from Amrit Paul Singh. We have three votes for a yes, three yes votes. The next ballot is from Frank Sequaria. I have one yes vote. And last ballot is from Jose Martinez. There is actually, the envelope was empty.
Okay. So we have three valid ballots for a total of five yes votes.
Yes, so we had a total of three ballots, four ballots. Three were received. And with five votes cast in favor of the ballot measure and zero cast in opposition to the ballot measure, the resolution declaring election results and directing the recording of a notice of special tax lien should be adopted.
Thank you. So then at this moment, we would... Any motions for approval?
So at this moment, you could adopt the resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Livingston declaring results of a special annexation election, determining the validity of the prior proceedings, and directing the recording of amended notice of special tax lien City of Livingston Community Facilities District Number twenty seventeen dash one, Public Services, Annexation Number Two.
So any motions?
Just so we're clear, I think, because I want to make sure that we adopt the first resolution too, so we can do them at the same time.
Oh, absolutely.
Same motion, so.
Okay, so it's for both resolutions.
Move to adopt both resolutions.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second that. Monica?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King? Mayor Protam Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number eleven, which is authorize the application and adopt the PLHA plan and authorize the city manager to execute the program application. It's just public hearing. Once again, authorizing or adopting the PLHA plan for permanent local housing allocation program and authorize the city manager to execute the program application, standard agreement, and any subsequent amendments or modifications thereto, as well as any other documents which are related to the program or the grant awarded to applicant as the department may deem appropriate.
Mayor Susan Long with Self Help Enterprises is here presenting this item. Good evening, Counsel and Councilmembers. I'm Susan Long. I'm with Self Help Enterprises. I'm a program director over housing programs such as home buyer assistance, housing rehabilitation, grant administration. I'm here before you this evening to notify the city of an opportunity to obtain funding that is allocated to the city via the Senate Bill SB two in two thousand and seventeen, where seventy percent of monies collected from real estate fees is then allocated out to entitlement and non-entitlement jurisdictions for eligible housing and homeless activities. The bill provided a permanent and ongoing source of funding to local governments for housing-related projects and programs. It is, as mentioned, it is available to entitlement and non-entitlement jurisdictions. The City of Livingston is a non-entitlement, so you do not get funds directly from the federal government. You have to compete for the funds through the state. Through that, we have the programs that are eligible under your five-year plan is for development, pre-development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of multifamily residential live-work rental housing, pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable rental and ownership housing, including accessory dwelling units that meet the needs of a growing workforce that earn up to 120% of the area median. There is also an option to match portion of funds in a local and regional housing trust fund or matching portions of funds available through a low-moderate housing asset fund. You can use the funds to capitalize reserves for services connected to the preservation and creation of new permanent supportive housing. You can assist persons experiencing or at risk of homelessness, including but not limited to providing rapid rehousing, rental assistance, supportive case management services that allow people to obtain and retain housing. Also, you can do accessible modifications to lower-income homeowners. You can support homeownership opportunities or provide fiscal incentives to counties or cities and through a joint adventure to increase housing opportunities. The plan before you this evening is expected to be used to promote the development of multifamily housing here in the City of Livingston. The current allocation for, that the city is at risk of actually losing is your 2019 funds. Those funds, this is the last year you can claim those funds, and that amounts to Over a five-year period, you're expected to be able to receive about 653, could be a little more, could be a little less. Your earnings do go up annually. Your 2020 allocation is $172,000 and some change, whereas your 2021 allocation is $179,000. So these funds are expected to continue, but they are dependent on real estate fees that are coming in. So we're asking you to adopt a five-year plan allocating the funds to provide development loans for the construction of affordable apartments, servicing households with incomes at or below 30% to 50% of the area median income, and that will be subject to a 55-year affordability covenant. The recommendation is that you approve the resolution before you, authorizing and adopting the local plan, certifying the public had adequate opportunity to review and comment on the plan, and authorize the city manager to execute the PLHA program application, the standard agreement, and any subsequent amendments or modifications thereto, as well as any other documents as needed. With that, I can answer questions. You can open the hearing.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, we'll take it out for any public comment at this time? Or are we going to go ahead and open the public hearing? Anybody on the phone? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Counsel. Any additional comments, questions, motions? Clarifications? Statements?
If there are no questions, I move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. We have item number 12, Accept and Approve the Closeout Report for the 20CDBG CB1 00032, which is a subsistence payments program? Subsistence.
It's a mouthful. Subsistence payments. I've got really, really good at saying that over the past couple of years. These are funds that the city received through the CDBG program in relationship to COVID. These were specifically related to assist individuals that were impacted by COVID with, under the subsistence payments program, was for rent, mortgage, utilities. We, the city was able to obtain $91,159 in their first round, which was funded in May of '21. And with those funds, we were able to assist 40, well, we received 43 applications. 16 were denied, 21 were provided with rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and/or utility. It could be a combination of those. They didn't necessarily have to only get rental assistance or mortgage. They could get any combination of those assistance. Of the funds, $88,352 was expended. There will be about $2,000 disencumbered under this grant. The grant expired in April of '22, and we are just ready to close it out and submit the final report to HCD. The city does currently have a CB 2 and 3 grants, one for business assistance and one for subsistence. We've actually spent your subsistence money. You actually converted your business assistance program to subsistence, so we can continue to help your residents. And that was just recently done as well. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments at this time? We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any public comment? Anybody on the phone? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Counsel for any additional comments, questions, motions, statements.
I move to accept and approve the closeout report on the 20CDBG CVI, CV1 subsistence payments program.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second by Councilmember King. Monica?
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and adjourn our regular council meeting and open our closed session once again. Special meeting, under special meeting. And just for the record, I will be leaving at this time. I'm not going to be able to join the rest of the closed session.